Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin this evening, Alderman Sevenik, maybe? There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been informed, and I'm sure many of you have heard, that outstanding Alderman, a former council president of the City of Manasha, he served from Tom Legnuski. He served from 1988 to 2002. He was my council president. He was involved with the city's growth in many ways, not just in the downtown area, but the entire east side. So Ted and Randy, you should be very thankful for his accomplishments on that side of town. And he was very involved with the Heckerod Wetland Reserve. I asked, I called the mayor today also, and if you will notice that later this week, we will be lowering the Manasha flag in his honor. He was a very quiet, and I was very proud to serve with him. He didn't have to be loud or voiceless, but he was able to accomplish his goals in his way, and that's what I really respected about him. I'd ask that we give him a moment of silence. Thank you.
Here, I had a comment.
I also served with Tom for a lot of years, and what I liked about Tom was when he was council president, if there was something that was coming up in your district, he would call you and give you a heads up on it and talk about the issue. And also, he liked attending the agenda meetings to see what was going to come up at the next meeting. And also, he had a, just a wonderful sense of humor that in politics, sometimes you need to get us through some days. So Tom was a great guy.
So the first item on the agenda this evening is a, well, first, I guess, roll call.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Yep.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Nichols is absent.
So the first thing on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding the rezoning of some parcels on Annap and Washington Street. Director Schrader, could you give us a brief synopsis of this?
Certainly. So as many of you can recall, earlier last fall, the city also rezoned a large portion just north of these properties and to the northeast along the Annap Street corridor from, again, industrial to C2 Central Business District. This is kind of along those lines of, again, continuing to try and make strides for implementing the city's vision through our comprehensive plan and downtown vision plan that we have taken. So in front of us today is to rezone, is a public hearing to rezone three properties, including the C. Coakley parking lot, or former Graphic Packaging parking lot, probably better well-known, the Luigi's Restaurant, as well as the Elks Lodge. So this item did appear in front of Plan Commission on, what did it mean, March? In the beginning of March, it did appear on Plan Commission, or, excuse me, March 19th, it appeared on the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission, due to concerns of the ownership of the C. Coakley Group, did postpone that until tomorrow, April 2nd. So with that postponement, there will be no action taken on the rezoning this evening. However, due to publications, we are still having the rezoning. I do know that, so basically, there is a motion on the floor at Plan Commission to approve it. It was just postponed to allow additional time to work out some other details. So that, again, will be on tomorrow's Plan Commission meeting, April 2nd. And that postponement is due to concerns from C. Coakley about what types of impacts that rezoning has on their property.
So with that, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on the topic, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, and if we could get your name and address for the record as well, please.
Good evening, Alder people. My name is Steve Cravitt. I'm a lawyer from Milwaukee, 825 North Jefferson Street. And I've had the pleasure of appearing before numerous city councils and Aldermanic and planning commissions and the like in my 40-year career. I know I look younger, but anyway. So the matter here tonight is about the Coakley rezoning of that parking lot. And we've had people sign up for about 25 minutes at a time, and if you don't mind, I would like to just direct the people to talk to you, if that's okay with y'all? Okay, thank you. This was the Graphics Packaging Plant, and I have here Mr. Mark Couth, who for 30 years was the, Mark, would you stand up, please? For 30 years was the plant maintenance manager. And I know Alderman Taylor, at one time worked there, so I'm sure he's very familiar with the place, and probably with Mr. Couth as well.
40 years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You have two.
And so Mr. Couth brought in some pictures, and I'm sorry, I have a set of pictures for y'all to look at. This particular set, I only have two copies of, so I'm going to give them to y'all, and they are of May 8th and May 3rd of 2017. And I'm going to ask Mr. Couth to come up here and describe the history of trailers in this parking lot across from Graphics Packaging.
Actually, you can give those to the clerk. We have a policy that you can't leave material in those parking lots. Thank you. We'll get copies of that. Go ahead. Mr. Couth?
And my name is Mark Couth. My address is 34 Sunray Court, Appleton. But as he said, I was a maintenance manager, plant engineer, started with American Can. I was there 38 years. So I'm very familiar with the building, maintenance. And, you know, during that time, and we had a lot of manufacturing, but the parking lot, we had trailers there constantly. I mean, we wouldn't have been able to operate that facility without having trailers stored there. I mean, there were 20, 30 trailers. I mean, there, and even like the pictures you saw there, I mean, not only was it being used actually by our company, but it was being used by others as well. And really, I mean, I went through the Coakley Building. They've put, they've relamped the entire building with LED lights. They've reheated it, upgraded the heating system. So they're putting money into the plant. And, but if, you know, you need, that building is landlocked. I mean, you've got on the north side, it's the river. On the west side, you've got the railroad tracks. South side, you've got Garfield Avenue. On the east side, you've got Washington Street. So if there's not a place to stage and store trailers, I don't see how you'd be able to have a facility there, a manufacturing facility. So it's a very critical thing to have a spot to park trailers.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'm going to ask the clerk to please hand one of these pictures to the audience. What I'm giving to you, ladies and gentlemen, is a series of Google Maps pictures. You've been supplied with Google Maps pictures by Mr. Schrader, I think with the intent of showing that, for some reason, there was a lapse of time when this parking lot was used for trailers. And if you look at the index on the front, it has the dates of the pictures. They are in order, okay, going oldest to newest. And if you look at the April 30, 1992 picture, way long ago, you can see the trailers parked. The second picture is December 31, 2004. Once again, trailers parked. Google did a better job of taking pictures as time went on, so you'll find. If you look at the next one, which is May 31st of 2005, once again, on this one, you see around 15 or 20 trailers parked in this property that's ought to be rezoned. If you look at June 27, 2010, again, there's 10 or 12 trailers parked. The next ones are both from 2011, May 31st and October 28th. The most easily to read picture is the October, sorry, is the May 31st, 2011 picture, because it's nice and clear. And you can see that there's trailers parked, not just in the back row, but also in other spots. If you look at these pictures carefully, right at the bottom, it'll also have the date on it, you know, way at the bottom. They're hard to see, but I'm sorry about that. So like I said, now, if you get to the October 28th, 2011, again, there's a large number of trailers. It goes to April 13th of 2015. This is a clear picture. It has five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 15 trailers. And on this picture, I want you to pause for a second and look to the right, to the Sonaco Packaging, which is next door, and for which there's no rezoning planned. And they are in constant use of trailers in and out and storage all the time, and they're in every picture here. So it's not like this is an outlying use of this property. And the proposed zoning change does not affect Sonaco, which is also a packaging company. It also needs to stage and store trailers. Let me add that there are six bays in the Coakley Building across the street, which is industrial zoned. Those bays have trailers in them. Today, it's just over there. There's four trailers in there, two more coming. And when there isn't enough room in the bays for the trailers, because they come in and out all day, it's a storage business, where are they supposed to go? They can't park in the street? There's nowhere to go other than this lot. And when Mr. Coakley bought this building, he had the lot in mind. On January 4th, 2018, he sat down with Mr. Schrader and other people before he purchased the building and said, "This is what I'm going to use the building for. This is what I'm going to use the parking lot for." And he was told there would be no problem for the continued use of this building and the trailer parking. The only thing the city was really interested in at that time was a possible bike path. And by the way, Mr. Coakley is perfectly fine with negotiating to put a bike path there. That's not a problem. But he bought the building with the understanding he could use it for these purposes. And there is no shortcut and no way to not park trailers there, a significant number of trailers there for staging and other reasons, in order to do his business. I should add, as we go through these pictures, that there is a 100,000 of the 477,000 square feet of remodeled space in this old building, which would have had no occupant now. No one's interested in putting manufacturing there. Half a million dollars of $400,000 in the building, $100,000 in his business for new lines and new, you know, equipment and forklifts and the like, has been invested by Mr. Coakley in this building. And he now has a contract with the Bemis Company, which is, you all know, is a giant employer in the valley, maybe the largest employer in the valley. And their plan, right now, they're using 100,000 square feet, and their plan is to potentially fill this building. To do that, they bring in truckloads every day, and they take off truckloads every day. They stage their trailers. There's trailers overnight. It's part of the business. Rezone this thing and lose the option that Mr. Coakley and Manasha Roadster thought they were getting when they bought this parking lot, and you are, more than effectively, you are actually going to eliminate that use for this building. And, all right, let's go back to these pictures. On April 13th, 2015, there's lots of trucks there. On April 21st, 2017, now, this is the first picture that was used by Mr. Schrader in his approach, I think, to minimize, showing that there was very few trailers here. And what I pointed out in my letter, which is in your packet, is that, you know, it's hard to take a snapshot using a Google Earth. Who knows what's going on in any particular day? You can't generalize from that day. So this day, look at the date, April 21st, 2017. There's five trailers there and pretty much an empty parking lot. Now, look at the pictures I just gave you that Mr. Couth brought me today. Those are that, those two copies, they are from that same time period, a few days later, May 3rd, 2017, and May 28th, 2017, and the parking lot is full of trailers. So the inference that the picture that you were provided for the 17th, sorry, for April 21st, 2017, that there were only five trailers or four trailers, and that use was diminished, is not a fair inference. That's all I'm saying. And then if you go to the next photo, which is April, I'm sorry, May 17th, 2018, this is during the construction period when Mr. Coakley was remodeling the plant, and there were no employees, and the parking lot is empty. And again, that's just a day in the life. Ever since then, and you can look at the statements we provided, all the people who work there presently, and I'd like to introduce them. Mr. Shram, are you here? Could you stand up, please? Jeff Shram is the operations, Vice President of Operations of the Coakley Storage Facility. Can I, Mr. Shram, can you just talk loud and say, are there trailers there in the parking lot across the street?
Yes.
And has that been the case consistently and constantly since about the middle of the summer?
Yes.
Okay.
With the exception of the pass, when you weren't plowing the lot.
When you weren't plowing the lot, you didn't put trailers there. Okay. Debbie Cutrell, are you here?
Yep.
Have you, what do you do, Ms. Cutrell?
I'm the office manager.
Okay. Have you observed trailers across the street?
Yes.
And any more detail than that?
Just, we need the parking lot for that reason, to stage, like you said.
Okay. Nick Stachowski, are you here?
Yes.
Do you stand up, please, sir? Nick, what do you do at the plant?
I'm the operations manager of the plant.
And you are literally moving goods in and out of those trucks all the time, am I right?
Yes, sir.
And what, you showed me the bays today. Describe what I saw today.
We had trailers in that I was unloading. I was putting product on the trailers to, for them to be taken out. We had two more trailers coming in that night. The docks were going to be full, so, and then transfer, the trucking companies asked if we could park more trailers out in our lot. Because if we have all six bays full, we have nowhere to go with the product that Bemis needs to be.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, what I'm trying to make sure you all understand is this is an operating business doing good things. You have a remodeled building. It looks good. There's a potential for a lot more employment there as it fills up. And Bemis, being a, you know, big operator in the valley, if they can't store overnight or put their trucks in the lot to stage, then they won't be using this facility. They have other options. And it would be a very, very sad, sad thing. Now, everyone on our side of the table is all for the good of Manasha. Nobody is trying to pull a fast one or do something bad for the city. It just appears that Mr. Coakley, had he known that this zoning was coming about, would never have purchased the building. And he wasn't told. He was told March 6th, that is, 21 days ago. And look at the scramble we've had to do. He had to hightail up here and talk to that planning commission, which he did, and now he's had to, you know, hire lawyers, and we've had to look deeply into this and do the things that we don't want to do, which is to, you know, threaten litigation and things like that. That's not the point of this. The point of this is to allow this thriving business to thrive. And if there is a concession to be made to have a bike path or to put up a fence or, and things that are reasonable will do that. If you change the zoning, and I know the argument will be, well, this is a grandfathered, change the zoning, you can grandfather the use. We've already have indication from Mr. Schrader that he's going to watch that very carefully. He has said to me that if, that they would be watching to see if there was any lapse of time, if there was a non-conforming use, and they would immediately, you know, move to stop it. And why would we put in a zoning? For what? If you had, if Disneyland wanted to come in and put in a amusement park there or something like that, I could understand it. But here, it's really a future thing, so let's push it further into the future. So I'm going to have Mr. Coakley address you, but what I would implore you all to do would be to either, number one, give an indication to your planning commission that you want this table for a period of time, or, number two, give an indication to your planning commission, which we prefer, that this isn't the time to change this zoning in this area to C2, or at least this parking lot. You will note that they put in two commercial ventures who are on the street, I think, a bar and another place that are, we don't have any objections to that area being zoned commercially. We only care about the parking lot next to Sonoco, where we can continue to park trailers, which we plan to do. Any questions for me? If not, I'd like Mr. Coakley to address you. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher Coakley.
You need to talk because of the mic, because you're being...
I apologize.
Just so you know, you're being followed by...
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So my name is Christopher Coakley. I'm the owner of the building. Prior to purchasing the building, I did meet with the city. I met with the city planner. I explained to him what I did for a living, what I do. My intent was third-party public warehousing and moving and storage, and that primarily the lot would be used for trailer storage. If, and Mr. Schrader said, "That would not be a problem at all, but down the road, he might ask for a bike path." I said, "When it comes to that, we can sit down and talk about that. I don't have a problem with that at all." And now, you know, roughly a year later, I get a letter in the mail saying, "By the way, there's a hearing in 10 days or eight days where we're going to rezone you commercially and you can't put trailers there." So I presently have a contract with Bemis Corporation, and quite honestly, I've got a team here that has been servicing Bemis, and they're growing, and they want to use me for all of their growth. And right now, the agreement that we have with them is 130,000 feet and 25 trailers. They have intentions to want to take my entire building, and with that would be even more trailer parking. If they can't have trailer parking, the whole thing falls apart, and it's done. And in essence, you have to understand, if there is no trailer parking across the street, since my building is landlocked, basically, I can't use the building. And not only can I not use the building, I won't know what to do with it. Basically, you guys, you guys will end up, ending up, by kind of end of domain, with the building, because I can't use it. So I'm stuck, okay? And what's worse, what's worse is you will end up with a building that you won't be able to do anything with, because it doesn't allow trailer parking across the street, and it needs trailer parking to function. This is akin to having a restaurant and saying, "We're taking away your car parking. Go down the street to park," okay? It would be very, very, very difficult to do. And basically, you would end up taking a building and mothballing a building. The building is actually, I'd invite you to come and tour. It's a beautiful building. It's food grade. I've just spent between $450,000 and $500,000 in the building, and right now, it is fabulous. And that's why Bemis loves it. They've toured it. We're servicing the heck out of it, and it's nothing but growth. I can bring other companies in too, but this is, all systems go. As a background, I've owned, bought, and sold millions of dollars and millions of square feet of property. And I totally get the vision of Mr. Schrader. In the past couple of years, in the past, it's a rock, you guys. But in the past, in the past three or four years, in the city of Milwaukee and in Sheboygan, I have sold industrial warehouses. 507 South Second Street, 710 South Third Street, 1300 North Fourth Street, 1560 West Pier Street, and 1031 Maryland Avenue in Sheboygan. I've sold millions of square feet of industrial property. Every one of those buildings, if you could, excuse me, every one of those buildings were zoned industrial. Every building that I mentioned to you that I sold went to condos and apartments. It got rezoned commercial. It got rezoned commercial by a developer who would put it under contract, go to the city and say, "I need 100 days of due diligence." Go to the city and said, "Rezone this for me." The city agreed to that, and then they bought it and did their development. That's typically how it plays out. And that way, you don't take an industrial building, the city wanted it all commercial. They weren't going to rezone it commercial and have a vacant building. They're like, "When the developer comes, we're more than willing to rezone it for them." So what you have a little bit here is a field of dreams. If you build it, they will come, okay? So what we're doing is rezoning my parking lot commercial, so that if it's rezoned commercial, the developers will come. Well, the developers might come in six months. The developers might come in 16 years. In the meantime, you guys are going to own a building, and I think it would be a terrible, terrible mistake and a travesty. And quite honestly, as a landlord in southeastern Wisconsin, guess what? I'm a Wisconsin guy, born and raised in Milwaukee. I've worked my tail off my whole life. I started driving semi when I was 17. And I have had manufacturing tenants in many of my buildings. I had Regal wearing kioskum for 150,000 square feet for 10 years. They had 80 to 100 union jobs. I had Prism Manufacturing in Port Washington, a manufacturer. They were in for years, a lot of jobs. I had Voler Mixers in Port Washington, came into my building. I put them as a tenant, a manufacturer. They had, they had manufacturing jobs there. They grew to about 50. You know, at the end of the day, the highest and best use of that building is for manufacturing. It's food grade, and I just put $500,000 into it. If a manufact, I'm marketing it to lease out for that purpose. If a manufacturer comes to me tomorrow, guess what? I'm going to lease a manufacturer's space, because that's the highest and best use of that building, and it's food grade, and it's beautiful. And if, but if there's no parking across the street, that can, parking for trailers, that can never happen. That all goes away. So last time I looked, manufacturing was still important. I think it's important. I think it's the highest and best use, and I think it should be manufacturing. And if a manufacturer comes, I'm going to work with that manufacturer to get them in there. Because to me, Wisconsin, it's about jobs. And manufacturing has the most jobs and the best-paying jobs. So that's the best use of that building. If you do what we're talking about, the building gets mothballed, and it's going to be, I think, just a terrible, terrible travesty of justice. I think it would be a terrible thing, because it's a beautiful facility. And I'd love some of the time for you to tour it, because what I told you, all these manufacturing jobs I put in, that building is nicer than any one of those buildings. And I'm very bullish on the valley, and I think it's a great place, and I like it a lot. But if you do this, you're basically, you're basically cutting out that building. I got to throw it back to you guys. I did a combination eminent domain once before with Jacobson Textron down in Racine about 20 years ago, and you can go online and find out about that. The city ended up paying me a lot more money than I paid for it, and they tore down the building for a new facility, and 18 years later, it's an empty parking lot. It's an empty gravel lot. So, you know, my experience is that the city doesn't necessarily make good landlords. Let the private sector do that. So leave it the way it is. I fill up the building. I have jobs there. It's all good. Manufacturing comes, I'm going to put manufacturing in there. You have my word on it. It's the higher, better use. And by the way, it also pays better rent. Okay? But, and if a developer comes along, well, that's... If a developer comes along for that parking lot and says, "I want to put condos there," and developers reel, "Come to me. I'll sell the parking lot and sell my building too," and they can develop that as well. That's a higher and better use as well. Right now, from my standpoint, warehousing, I'm doing the lowest use, okay? But the building is filling up. There's jobs. These people have jobs. They came on board with me. They're working their tail off for me. They know what they're doing, and we're going to grow it and add more jobs. If manufacturing comes, God bless it, I'll embrace it. And if a developer comes, we'll work with the developer, just like I did all those buildings. And if a developer comes, we'll work with the developer, just like I did all those buildings. I sold them all to developers. If a developer comes, I'll work with the developer, we'll sell it to the developer. But don't throw a building away with the idea that because we rezoned it commercial, a developer is going to come along tomorrow. A developer might, but a developer might not come around for 20 years. So at the end, you, you folks can do whatever you want to do. But I'm just telling you, as a businessman and a landlord and a guy who, in southeastern Wisconsin, I employ the better part of 100 people and I started my company from scratch, I, I'm just telling you, I believe you're making a tremendous mistake. I think it would, I think it would be terrible. Because you're going to end up owning a building that's going to be empty and it's going to be functionally useless because it's rezoned across the street. And it would be, it would be terrible. Now, I'm open to questions, folks.
And we don't typically do questions at public hearings?
Okay, I just, I didn't know, so...
That's fine.
Okay.
But I don't know if there's anyone else who wanted to speak on the public hearing tonight?
No, we just wanted to thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Coakley. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Sorry, Kyle. I can see fine. Good evening. My name is Kyle Collett. I'm the paper mill manager at Sunoco, 69 Washington Street. We also leased the warehouse located at 354 Anup Street, owned and operated by the Gilbert Warehouse LLC. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. I learned about this proposal just recently and have been doing my best to research it here in the last few days. As I understand, the proposal is to rezone a portion of the South Shore that includes 161 Washington Street, including the driveway easement on the west side of 354 Anup Street. Question and a comment, and now that I've learned about the planning commission session tomorrow, I plan to attend that as well. Will the rezoning to commercial reduce or eliminate semi-trailer traffic on 161 or 354, specifically the easement? If so, has the common council and the planning commission considered the permanent impact to the residential properties along Anup Street? Traffic will be forced to, semi-trailer traffic to the warehouse at 354 Anup Street will be forced to continue to use Anup Street. Previously, under prior arrangements with Graphic Packaging and the Gilbert Warehouse LLC, there was an agreement to use a portion of the property on 161 as a throughway to the warehouse. Those agreements were changed, therefore rerouting truck traffic around the church along Anup Street and to take one of two entrances into the warehouse building. If this easement is also zoned commercial and if traffic, semi-trailer traffic is eliminated from that easement, that will force traffic further north along Anup Street to use the additional entrance right next to residential property as the current one is. Sunoco and the Gilbert Warehouse and Warehouse LLC have eight years remaining on a 10-year lease. We have intentions to operate and store paper in that facility as well. There will be a negative impact to that agreement if this agreement, or excuse me, if this proposal passes as is. Sunoco has resumed conversations with Gilbert LLC and the Coakley Group regarding trailer traffic through this property. In fact, on March 3rd through the 15th, we leased trailer par, excuse me, we leased contractor parking, parking spaces at 161 Washington Street for overflow contractor parking during, during one of our large outages. Additionally, I wanted the council to consider, we've been in talks with the city on some operations about making some improvements to the backend of, of our property on 69 Washington Street from complaints from the condo association and other places. We have investigated in the past using 161 Washington Street as a potential option. If this rezoning goes through, that will eliminate that option for us as a potential location for any of the operations that we have on the back of our property. I look forward to gaining more clarification on this proposal and attending the, the session tomorrow. I appreciate the time.
Is there anyone else this evening on the public hearing? Seeing no one else, we'll call the public hea, hearing to a close. And then we'll move on to public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If there's anyone here who has other comments this evening about things that are on the agenda or not on the agenda, we welcome you to come up, come forward at this time. There is a five-minute time limit for each person.
Sandra Dable Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Actually, I just have a few housekeeping comments. First of all, in the council packet, under the minutes for the common council, I wanted to address the TIF 14. It said that it was approved 8 to 0. And in fact, it was 5-3. If you want to check the minutes of that, I think that should be amended. And with that discussion that took place, I do want to, I was a little disappointed because I do think the vote could have been closer and actually may have failed. If, with all due respect to Sam and the gentleman from Ellers, questions were brought up regarding the outline area of the TIF district. And they were pretty insistent that it needed to be part of the plan in order to go forward. In fact, it didn't need to be part of the plan. The plan can be amended at any time. The reason that you would put it in the plan was that, say, 10 years from now or whenever, 20 years, whenever the increment would be available, an amendment could be made to allow other projects. And that would require council approval and a public hearing. By having it in the plan, it doesn't have to go through council. So to me, it's disappointing to think that there are items in the plan that you're basically tying the hands of a future council that may or may not come to fruition. I wish they would have been more clear with that. And you, you, you repeated it about four times. So there are items, I am not in favor of that TIF. I do, I am, I'm adamant that it does not meet the but-for test, number one. And I've said it again, and I know you passed the plan. But I do think if some of that would have came forward, the vote would have been different. The but-for means the development will not occur but for meeting this criteria. The first criteria is that a similar project cannot happen without public assistance. Almost the exact same project is going on in Midway and Oneida with the same developer, the same Starbucks, the same strip mall being built without TIF's, TIF grant money. The project was passed in August. A site plan was approved by the Plan Commission. And as I brought up before, the, the agreement was that they were going to start immediately. I don't know who or there was some kind of interference with that agreement that pushed it off. Because instead of having a project start immediately without TIF assistance, it's now been delayed. And so those are two, the, two of the criteria right there. And then a further one is that with this roadway improvements outside of the district, you cannot use a TIF for projects that are historically and typically funded through the general tax levy. And most roadway pr, projects are funded that way, through special assessment or through the TIF general yes, ton. So for those reasons alone, it fails. And I'm not saying that area doesn't need improvement, but the city of Nina, and I actually forwarded the, the summary of building permits for the city of Nina for last month. And the shopco optical facade was being, was one of the building permits that was taken out by the building owner without TIF funds. So with that said, I know it passed, but I think that could have easily been a tie vote if not defeated. I also wanted to comment that I noticed that the SafeBuild agreement for inspection terminated. And just at the last meeting, I mentioned with the new housing plan that we were going to be short on staff. And now the inspector gave their notice, which I'm not surprised because I didn't really like the agreement that was put in place. They were more than happy to work for the city when they were receiving large percentages of new construction, including the tower that went across the street. Because they were paid like 80%. Now that construction and building permits are in the downside, they don't want to work for us anymore. That's how I read it. You know, they're not making money, so why bother? So we now have our part-time building inspector that was supplemented with this other person. And we have this whole new project, this whole new housing initiative going on, and we are short on staff. And that was my concern with this, that this money was going to be going toward salaries. And it probably will be. Item P, I'm sure you all noticed, the typo with Los Angeles. I thought that was kind of a, I thought that was the April Fool's joke, to tell you true. Items R and S, the mayor's letters. I'm glad he finally took my advice. I've brought this up several times, especially to the letter to Governor Evers and most recently at the budget hearing, that this is, needs to be approached regionally. What his letter fails to acknowledge is he didn't copy Roger Roth and he didn't copy the city of DePierre. DePierre has several bridges, bridges similar to ours that they now have to, to pay and maintain. But he failed to acknowledge that if this is so vital to tourism, tourism dollars by the state of Wisconsin needs to be part of that equation also. And let's see. Under action items, you have the water street corridor plan. What I was disappointed in in there was that first and foremost, it was really not very good notification to the public. Many people did not know that presentation went through. And out of the three or four options, none of the options removed the street. Any developer is going to want to have waterfront property. And what we have is a parking lot on the waterfront, if you look at it close. We own the street. And granted, there are houses there. I don't think this street should be redone this year or next year. I think if we want to put in a shore wall and we want to put in a bike lane and work along the shore wall, fine. But I would not put money into redoing a street that any developer that comes forward is going to want to tear out. They're going to want to have direct access to the water. And by putting a street in there, it was taken away on the other side. There is no water street on the east side of Takeo. And you also have a pedestrian crossing right in front of the semis that they're just talking about. So that's a little hairy. Oh, and one thing, I cannot, going back to the TIF. And now with this, you have the lever, the developer agreement. We have money now, future increment set aside for roadway improvements outside the district. Yet nothing in that TIF addresses ingress or egress in and out of that shopping center. Taking a left onto Racine, taking a left onto Midway, entering, exiting, yet it was a huge thing that we had to have a median on Racine Street. Broad Street could not take a left, and I'm not going to let you guys forget it. It was too dangerous for me to exit my house and take a left onto Racine or someone from the other side of Broad to take a left on Racine going north. But it's fine to leave that in, those entrances and exits just the way they are. That should have been addressed in the TIF. If you actually wanted to throw money into roadway improvements, but instead it's for flower boxes and other things. So I think you guys dropped the law on that. And again, I said, the unfortunate part of that project is so much of the surrounding area is already tax exempt between Goodwill and United Way and Fox Red Cross and, you know, you can go on and on. And now we're taking more increment off the tax roll. And that's, that's all, should be big-time commercial property. And we're losing it. It's going to be tied up. And real quick, just that letter of intent, I hate options to buy, especially when they're for a dollar. Tomorrow, somebody could walk in and offer you $2 or $10 and your hands are tied. If they want to make an offer, have them make an offer, a real offer. And then you can counteroffer and make sure everything imaginable that you can think of, put in that offer or that counteroffer. Because otherwise, it's going to come back to bite ya. As far as making sure it's not going to be tax exempt or, you know, that you can buy it back and you, all the things that we always talk about. Because we ran into that with Jimmy John's where they accepted the offer for asking price. So according to the attorney, we could not do a counteroffer. So throw everything in it and thank you for your time.
So our council rules do allow me to clarify a couple of things that were stated. First, any TIF expenditure must be approved as part of the annual budget of the common council. It's not something that I can just do on my own. Secondly, roadway projects were paid for by TIF dollars in the Menasha Business Park, Province Terrace, the ponds, and I'm guessing a few other places that I can't remember. Third, SafeBuild only does our commercial inspections. Allison is not qual, qualified to the right license to do commercial inspections. So SafeBuild stopping doing inspections has no bearing on Allison's workload. And fourth, the letter that I sent out to Governor Evers was also sent to Senator Coles, Jock, Roth, Representative Hints, Representative Steinecke, Representative Stuck, Representative Tussler, the United States Coast Guard, Fresno, two DOT representatives, Department of Tourism, East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, and the mayors of both Kekona and Oshkosh. So I don't know if there's anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? If not, we're going to, whoops, sorry. Move forward to the report of department head staff and consultants. And I'm sorry, Tammy, I told you it'd be really, really quick. And we ended up with a few other things on the agenda tonight. But Tammy Green is here from the Community Foundation to tell us a little bit about the Province Terrace Trail and their support of it.
All right. Thank you. No problem. Hello, everyone. I'm Tammy Geenan, Vice President of Community Engagement for the Community Foundation for the Fox Valley Region. The Community Foundation's mission is to strengthen our community for current and future generations by helping people make a difference in the lives of others. And one way that we do that is by helping people, businesses and... And one way that we do that is by helping people, businesses, and organizations create charitable funds that make grants to support a wide range of nonprofit organizations and community projects and causes. And one of the funds that we manage is called the Bright Idea Fund. And this fund helps to meet ever-changing needs in the community. And one of those areas of need is community development. And we were thrilled to be able to award a grant from the Bright Idea Fund to support the Province Terrace Trail Extension Project with the city. And I'm here to congratulate all of you and all of the partners who were involved in helping to make this project a reality because it's helping to increase access and safety within the broader trail system throughout our region and will serve people of this community well for generations to come. And it is my pleasure to present a representation of a check for nine thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents for the Province Terrace Trail Extension. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Tammy. I'm just going to give up, just a real brief update on the project. The contractor began about a month ago and we started on the north end on Nature's Way and they got about seventy-five percent or so of the helical piers in there. They, you know, cleared the trail and it's, it's really going quite well. What you'll be seeing in the next coming weeks is they will start to put the headers on top of the piers. And then they'll, a couple of weeks after that, they'll start framing in the trail and maybe a month or so from now, they'll, they'll start the boardwalk portion where it looks like we'll be on schedule to maybe have this trail open in June, which would be great, opening a summer, and we'll, we'll get this trail open. And thank you so much for being a, a partner in this project.
Thank you, Tammy. So while you guys are taking a picture, for, for everyone else, I did get a opportunity to go out today to view the trail and they have started some of the substructure framing. So you'll see some two-by-fours and other wood framing out there on the north end of the trail. And they're still working, as Brian said, on the helical piers and the rest. But it's starting to come along. They've probably got a couple hundred feet of, of actual substructure, wood structure, substructure going in right now for the trail itself. So it's moving along quite quickly. Moving forward, if there's no objections, we do have our consultants in the background for the Water Street project and we'd like to move that up on the agenda. Garrett does have a long drive back to Madison this evening, so I don't want to keep him here till midnight. So if there's no objection, we'd like to move that item forward at this point. Hey, that might be kind of entertaining. Okay. Thanks, everybody. I'm Andrew, Andrew, and this is Garrett. I think we've hopefully got a chance to meet everybody by now. Thanks again for the opportunity to work on this corridor plan. Realize you guys have a lot on your agenda and you haven't really even started your meeting yet here at seven, so I'll work through this fairly quickly. And then if people have questions, we can kind of circle back around. I'll try to get us through this pretty, pretty efficiently. Just am here to share, really, we're going to do the presentations to kind of show what's inside this plan. And the plan is structured around five different chapters. So introduction, we cover kind of overview, purpose, timeline, background of the study. And the sort of overall goal of this study purpose was to prepare a plan for Water Street Corridor to inform future land use and zoning decisions with an emphasis on capitalizing upon the trail, new, the, the new trail system, the loop, the lake, the friendship trails, the other trail work you're doing on the other side of, of, of the city to create that holistic network. Just a little timeline, this was a fairly short planning window. We kicked off with a staff meeting in December with Josh and Sam and I believe Joe. In January 2019, we, we had put together an ad hoc steering committee that was included both some staff as well as some residents of Water Streets and business owners, property owners, and did kind of a little bit of background investigation. In January, I believe it's 29th, we had the Water Street Design Workshop where we had a whole bunch of people come out on a twenty-degree below night, I believe it was. And so I didn't think anyone was going to show up. Sam and the mayor said, yes, they will. So I stand corrected.
It was very active. It was very engaging. Everybody had something to say. It was very interactive, a lot of drawing, a lot of, very good interaction, one of the better, one of the better workshops that I've attended. So it was really, really well, really well attended.
Well, that's a good point.
Could be at home by a fireplace, maybe.
And then fast forward to the February, we had more meetings with that ad hoc steering committee, I think six or seven total. In March, we came back with an open house to sort of present the plan. And we've, since that time, developed more of the plan and we've been to plan commission and now we're here for common council. Just a very high level sort of background prior planning. We're trying to build off of the couple of plans in particular, the downtown vision plan from 2017 that kind of looked at land use from maybe a five thousand foot high view around this, this whole downtown area. We're doing kind of a follow-up, diving deeper into that vision plan for the downtown, trying to take some of those ideas and create more of a tangible, physical vision or design. And then the other one was the Menasha Lock Site report, which was from 2016. The Fresno and East Central hosted workshop, I believe it was at the library. I wasn't there, but I think there was, according to the minutes of this report, there were about a hundred people there. So trying to really build off of those two plans. The, the vision site for the lock site talked a lot about that lock site and the surrounding corridor. So we went back and looked at some of the prior planning efforts. Some of the themes that came out of that was just the desire for attractive greenway, not only enhancing the lock site, but really using this overall sort of revitalization to create new residential development opportunities, help revitalize Takeo Street. But I also wanted to mention that, you know, there were concerns in that report, some discussions about noise, display, potential displacement of current residents, things of that nature. We got into the Water Street today, kind of summarizing existing conditions within the, the corridor. We looked at land use within this corridor and kind of went through parcel by parcel, looking at existing land use. Land use is kind of somewhat mirrors the, the zoning, existing zoning, which is on the next map. But as you can see here, you've got kind of a mix of some mixed-use sort of commercial activities on Takeo, a lot of residential in that block number two. And then as you get to block number three, it's a little bit more of a mix with some light industrial uses, some residential. Valley Marine, I coded red because it kind of has a commercial retail aspect to it as well. So it's fairly kind of mixed-use corridors, it stands today. And the zoning, what you have in place right now is more or less, you know, kind of mirrors that. And so we kind of spent some time understanding some of the issues behind land use, homeownership versus rental properties, zoning, and kind of used that along with a look at the infrastructure. We had Dave Pfeiffer, formerly with Pfeiffer Brothers on our team, helped us look at some of the infrastructure in the site. We talked with the utility company and with Josh and your Public Works Department to get kind of a big picture understanding of the condition of the infrastructure along this corridor and what that might mean for future development. We looked at buildings. We also did a, I did a, I guess what I call windshield survey. So I went around, looked at all the properties and kind of on about a 10-point scale of kind of yes, no, kind of did an assessment, high-level assessment of the building conditions. This is kind of found block, block number one, I guess, as you know, is kind of, there's some buildings there that, some of them are in pretty decent shape. Some of them could use a little bit of help, but kind of a, of a mixed bag. Certainly on the Takeo Street side, see some investment. As you get into some of the residential areas, some of the residential areas need some renovations. Block number two is kind of some more, I put majority homes fair to good condition, some exterior repairs needed, a few major repairs needed where you see like structural issues going on or some more significant concerns. And then block number three, a lot of those homes appeared in fair to excellent condition. Some of the single-family homes, special on Kekona Street, where I would say in excellent condition, and a few buildings needing some new driveways. So we kind of looked at the physical conditions, the land use conditions. And then, not sure, this is in power, did, did you load this in PowerPoint? Did it get converted to? Not sure. Okay. So I, this, the color scheme broke up a little bit on, on this, so I apologize for, not sure if this really is going to make any sense, given the resolution of the screen. But we also, basically, we identified where you've got gaps in the sidewalk within this Water Street corridor. So there's a number of areas as part of our plan, we want to make sure that we're adding new sidewalk segments to have a complete pedestrian framework going forward. Looks like this slide came out a little bit better. Similar in terms of open space and trails, we see an opportunity to not only put in a multi-use trail along the Water Street, but this plan also envisions a pedestrian trail along the canal waterfront. And then slightly outside the study area, but was brought up in the workshops, was the idea of eventually creating that loop on the south side of the canal. And that's again, more conceptual. You've got a railroad running through there. It's probably not, you also don't have a lot of room there, but just the idea of getting a better loop or bicycle accommodation is really what that's intended to achieve. And then a notion of getting some different sidewalk treatments in here to address some of the pedestrian safety concerns on, on Takeo Street, we can get into a little bit later. And then this is looking at wayfinding. And again, it's not really visible at this kind of resolution, but the idea with the wayfinding was, we just wanted to make sure as you move forward, you're looking at both pedestrian as well as vehicular wayfinding opportunities. You've got a lot of wayfinding out there already, and so we've identified future areas that could use some, some wayfinding. And then also pointing out, there's some low-cost things you can do, like one of my favorites up in Managua, where they just put Welcome to Managua on the side of the building, doesn't cost a fortune, can look very attractive, and there may be some opportunities to, to do that as well. We did a kind of miniature market analysis to sort of update some of the numbers that were, came up with in 2017 plan. There was a lot of focus on residential as part of this study and we continued to see the corridor as, as a, as attractive place for a variety of both market rate and owner occup, market rate as well as affordable housing. I guess that's something I just wanted to stress. You know, we think with the water, there's an opportunity to do some more market rate type housing, medium density, you know, two, three stories perhaps. But we also think, given the demographics of the area and the need for workforce housing, there's an opportunity to do some, put some more affordable housing in here as well. So this top is just a illustration of a development project across the street from a park. I think it's down in Madison or nearby, that's a, a market rate project. And this one in the bottom is from some nice work that Neighbor Works Green Bay is doing, where they've gone into some neighborhoods and they've developed some pretty attractive workforce housing, affordable housing as town homes. We did kind of looking at existing conditions and then did some strategic planning to sort of identify what are the specific goals, objectives for this plan, looked at alternatives. Garrett did a lot of alternatives for us, so we could kind of weigh the pros and the cons of different ideas. So we went to steering committee, the design workshop, where we're here with the plan commission yourselves to gathering input along the way. The overall sort of goals and objectives that we came up with through the ad hoc steering committee to sort of frame this project were really enhancing the aesthetics and overall functionality of Water Streets, strengthening connections, not just pedestrian, but also vehicular connections, as well as expanding recreational wildlife viewing amenities. We talked a lot about maintaining view sheds and, you know, keeping, being, thinking about maintaining view sheds or improving views, views across the canal to the south, improving gathering areas and gateways. So, you know, we think the Takeo Street Corridor, as well as the Menasha Lock Site have good potential to just, to support whether economic activity or just bringing people together in the community as, as destination points, focal points. Creating attractive great gateways, we felt was important, as well as identifying improvements to the canal system and addressing land use. So I'll go through some of the high-level goals and objectives. I'm not going to read all these, but we, we broke it out, sort of, those were the overall goals. And now we get more into the design objectives that Garrett was using for a lot of the landscape work. So for Takeo Street, parking and circulation, heard a lot of people mention, really wanted to find a way to preserve the Coke Building because of the loss of the brand and some of the other old historical structures downtown. To me in particular, as well, I think it has, creates an opportunity, even though you've lost some of those other assets, to still anchor this end of lower Main Street with a historical element and kind of a signet, unique signature building in your history. Addressing pedestrian, we wanted to look at pedestrian crossing and then creating a connection between Water Street and Kekona Street to facilitate bike traffic. We looked at Water Street and the canal. So some of the design objectives were to create that continuous canal walk, provide additional green space, boat parking, on-street parking, terraces, overlooks, and pedestrian scale lighting. And then for lock site number one, creating a lookout tower, that was something that was brought up quite a bit in that previous study, historic interpretation, amphitheater, gathering space, some bathrooms, concessions, and a natural playground. So I'm going to let Garrett kind of talk through some of the alternatives.
So when we started out, we had all this background information and we had sat down and had five tables at the, at the public open house. Each table had their own ideas. Our job was to take that information that was, that they drew and had a lot of passion that they threw into the, into the drawings and kind of consolidate into three kind of ideas. So I'm going to go through these fairly quickly because the, the main objective is the, are the final plans, but just showing you that there was a lot of public input and a lot of staff input on, on the, on the ideas. Again, I'm not going to go into detail, but there was, there was three concepts that basically looked at the different ways of how, how do you gather the different, the different applications of how that street gets addressed? There was actually one thought where the street actually goes away, but that was a, it was a concept that was not preferred because residents are, are currently on Water Street and even if they're, if, if they, if development comes in later, there would be some kind of need for parking in the front. So these three ideas were, were put together and then brought back to, back to ad hoc. With that in mind, then we developed concept, alternatives, five concept alternatives for Water Street. That being of how do we play with the grade change? How do we play with the road structure? Is it a two-way? Is it a one-way? How much parking's on it? How do we address, do we integrate bike path and, and pedestrian traffic together? Are they separate? So we went through all these different iterations and what really panned out in the end was then Takeo Street. So we, we, we did buckets is what we kind of called it. We had Water Street and the canal as one area, Takeo up to Main and then down to the, down to the bridge. And then we looked at the lock site. Those were pretty much the three buckets that we looked at. And so these concepts, we did five concepts for, for Water Street, different iterations. We did two concepts for Takeo. The big thing on Takeo was looking at the existing conditions. And this option shows is maintaining and this option shows is maintaining the existing buildings. Everybody, every person, everybody said, "We cannot get rid of the Coke building. That, that's kind of a, a no-brainer that needs to say." There was some, some thought that maybe, I'm forgetting the name of the building, Sam.
You can't use the pointer on the TV screen. You can only use it on the front screens.
There. Back. So the existing building on the opposite side, the, the idea that by, by having that and maintaining it was going to, it's too small of a scale. It, it really wouldn't fit into the, to the new development that potentially could happen on, on the east side of Taco. And then the other concept was a grander, more, a bigger approach down to, to grab onto the, to the canal walk and having that translate to both sides, the east and west, and have this kind of grand entry as you're coming across, across the bridge. And then in addition, taking down most of those buildings to create a cohesive development on both sides, so that it really makes a, a grand entrance. And then gussying up the Coke building to match that and using some of the facade and some of the architecture to facilitate or to, to translate what we're trying to achieve in, in the corridor. All developments looked at, how do we improve the parking in the back? If there's going to be new buildings, if there's going to be new development, new retail or mixed use, you got to have a, a component of parking with that. It's kind of a, it's kind of gray is what's going on the east side because we don't have really control of that. What, that wasn't really in our scope. But we had, did have the opportunity of looking at like, not structured parking, just, this regular street-level parking and looking at different ways of tackling that. And then the lock site was kind of an interesting process. We did have the representative from Fresno gave us the whole download of like all the roadblocks that we're going to be running into, yada, yada, yada. But it was the committees and ad hocs and pretty much everybody said, "Let's leave these plans on the table. Let's not take them off the table. Leave them on as a placeholder so that when Fresno does do these improvements, we can, we can team with them to get something that both Minasha and Fresno are, are happy with and create a space of gathering." And the major differences between the two plans was, one was leaving the residents intact that, on the, on the bottom corner. And then the other concept is taking it down and making it into a true park and really grabbing onto the locks and, and celebrating what it is and trying to interpret and, and show people that this locks is a very important element to the Basically what I just said is, is what was talked about. And then the corridor plan, you want to go to this part?
So the corridor plan envisions, kind of just start with the land use, which I think is, makes some sense to kind of look at. So as the overall kind of objective for the project, thinking about the land use and how that ties in, based on a review of the previous studies and then the engagement with the community and the, and staff and the ad hoc, this was kind of the, the land use plan that we came up with, kind of modified a little bit from the 2017 plan. But this plan sort of envisions that Taco Street redevelopment areas, we're calling it number one, where you've got the Coke building, Taco Tap, et cetera, maintaining that as that historic mixed-use commercial. I think it's currently Zone C2, I believe. And, but then behind that, leaving that residential on the, on that first block up to High Street. Block number two, keeping that as residential, but again, going over time, adding a little bit of density in there. So it becomes medium density residential. You've got more people there to support the surrounding businesses and add vitality to the street. And then number three, we identified as mixed use. It would includes residential as well as some limited commercial, potential for some limited commercial uses as well. So that is kind of the overall sort of land use plan that we came up with through the study. This is kind of the preferred concept or overall concept. Again, we had three that we were working with, and then as we went through the process, this got tweaked even a little bit more. But probably end up diving into this a little bit in more detail was Garrett kind of walks us through those three buckets. I just wanted to apologize for some of the pixelation screen there. I think I meant to open this up in PDF, but I think it must have gotten converted, converted to PowerPoint. But here you can kind of see again, where, how we have this structured with the unified development area around Taco. These two yellows are the two kind of represent those large entrances or plaza areas that Garrett mentioned. And then we've shown the block level land use. I guess the other key takeaways from this too, that we talked about was just strengthening connections between Cacana Street and Water Street. That's this kind of squiggly green line. So as this road gets put into place, there could be opportunities to add some street trees, do some greening. And then at these little nodes here, we've identified those little circles that are punctuated along Water Street, identify those would be some smaller social gathering areas that get tied into the design and the functionality of the, of the canal walk. And then finally, I think it's important to just mention in this overall concept, again, flipping just a little bit outside of our study boundary, you know, we just envisioned on the south side of the canal, a loop, but then also perhaps an opportunity to do some sculpture, some public art. It was talked about potentially, there's an opportunity to do some screening over there, some vegetation. I think we talked about potentially solar panels, but it gives a different kind of experience for boaters that are going through there. And then one last little thing that we also touched on in talking to Josh and treating some of the stormwater, we thought there could be opportunities along here where those green squiggly lines are in those circles to maybe do some low-impact development or green infrastructure where we could capture, retain, and infiltrate some of that water, right, and on location instead of having to shoot it into the, the
I'll just go through the final concepts. So through discussions, through the, through the two different concepts, this was the, the preferred plan or the, the final plan that, that everybody kind of came to agreement on. The, we, we did less embellishment on the east side because that's kind of a variable, again, we don't, we're not too familiar with. But consensus was to create this more grand entry and, and pedestrian entrance down to the canal, creating a gateway with a crossing across Taco. There were some concerns about the amount of traffic, but talking with Josh, he can do a pedestrian-controlled, a pedestrian-controlled crossing at that, that section. One of the major changes that happened is we took the access off of Taco onto water. Main reasoning being is, is just that left-hand turn and that movement coming off of Taco was a little bit difficult. And also, it, it created the opportunity of creating more green space down in the water. That was a higher priority of, of having this grand green space, putting bodies in the street, putting bodies closer to Taco, makes it activated and will stimulate the development that's going up and down Taco Street. Again, Coke's main, Coke building maintains, and then development is similar on, on either side. Streetscape improvements, i.e. pavers, pedestrian lights, new, new walks can be, can be added to the development along Taco. Another major change was the two buildings, the redevelopment authority, not redevelop, it's Brown County.
Whatever, kind of housing.
Housing Authority. And then the building, the, the property where the, the building, the house burnt down, those two parcels are open and available. And to incorporate both the turning movement to get between Cacana and to Water Street, we created a kind of a parkway or a parking lot way by taking down those, those lots. And then really beefing up the parking lot in the back. We created about 41 parking spaces, maybe a little bit more if we worked at it more. But it really greens up the green space and creates that nice road coming in and creates a better green space and a better pedestrian connection. One of the stronger things that everybody was talking about is if we're bringing these bike paths from the loop or from, and bringing the bike path through, if it doesn't get to these, these retail spaces, they, they aren't going to be as strong. So maintaining and creating that traffic point or that, or the bike, bike point to the businesses. And then the back businesses are, they're, they're thought of as double-sided. So you have a parking lot on the backside or on the west side, and then the street side. So they have double sides. You have better, better retail exposure. So it'd be a, a nice application with the parking in the back. The stairways, that was one of the things that everything, I think everybody pretty levitated, much levitated to. They wanted that more formalized thought of being able to go down, sit down by the towers, have some kind of a performance space down below. And then pretty much everybody, I don't think there was anybody that didn't say it, they wanted to lower the canal wall down to get closer to the water. That was one of the bigger things of making this successful. What did I miss?
Pedestrian crossing.
Pedestrian crossing. And then there'd be, the, we'll, we'll show that in the, in the Water Street. So, oh, the other thing is that there was an improvement up on Main Street at that intersection that we would mirror that so that that's a secondary gateway to the downtown. So major gateway at the end of the, at, at the end of the bridge with, with the stairways and then a secondary entry at Main Street.
Actually, I had one, one other thing, I guess is worth pointing out. You know, we've, we've also identified in the backstreet in these parking enhancement areas, like some bike, some bike racks, potential of putting in like some wayfinding signage back there. So I, I think that that Taco Street could, in a sense, serve as a trailhead that might help stimulate some economic activity at those businesses. So I'm driving down from Appleton. I know there's parking and stuff. A beautiful day, maybe kind of jammed up a little bit at the end of Broad Street over by the lock. I decide I'm just going to drive back here, maybe get on a bike ride for an hour or something, grab a burger on my way back or get an ice cream cone or a beer. So I see this kind of also functioning as, as a kind of a secondary trailhead that would support some of those businesses in there.
And then lastly, the original concept did not have a, a thought of, of carrying the canal underneath the bridge. So they, we just wanted to make sure that if there's some concern with the intersection, that there, there is some way of making that pedestrian connection. We are investigating. Both towers have that tunnel underneath, which would be very cool. We just haven't gotten into it enough, but that was one of our recommendations that if it's possible to make that connection through that, through that, that could be a very kitschy, very cool, unique kind of application that could really bring people and then really strengthen the development on the east side of Taco. So, so it's a double application. So if somebody wants to come up and cross at the street, which we want bodies on the street because we want their billfolds out, we want them buying, they want, we want them on the retail, we want them on Taco. But if they just want to continue on and, and, and go through as a, you know, as a, as a canal walk, they can pass by underneath the bridge. So that's Taco. There was a lot of discussion on, on Water Street. Again, consensus was, in order for the canal walk, it, I'll, I'll lay it out like this. There was a desire to maintain the street. They wanted some parking, but they wanted, we as a group, everybody, really wanted to make this more of a parkway, that it's not dominated by the street. It's not, it's, it's dominated by pedestrians and by bikes and by people down in the canal. So this is kind of an iteration of three of the concepts. We took the street, we narrowed up the, the, the lane width to 11 feet. Josh and I talked, it might even be able to go lower, depending on the, on the speed limit. And then they wanted this waving pattern. So if you can picture this kind of waving throughout the entire corridor. So the street is linear. It's up against the, whether it's houses or whether it's future development, but it's a, it's a, an entryway onto the, onto the canal. The bikeway that you see, and I'm just going to, I'm going to walk, so here. So streetway, and then we do parking nodes. Instead of having the, the continuous parking on the street, we do pockets of parking. And then that allows this parkway to flow inside and out. So where there is no parking, we can push it up against the street. And where there is parking, we can push it down. 10 feet, they wanted to segregate, they wanted to separate, not segregate, separate, the bike parking or the bike path from the canal walk. The ability of somebody that's on their bike that's going from point A to point B and are just trying to get there, that creates that opportunity where they don't have to stop, they don't have to worry about strollers, they don't have to worry about people walking. They can still do that. People can still go on the path, but there's a, there's a confidence that it's not going to be as disruptive. That happens down at the canal, where you have strollers and you're walking. That's, that's the thought with the canal. And then also, a canal walk varies from eight feet wide to 14 feet wide. Eight feet is just the pass-through. And then the 14-foot areas are where you have boat parking, you have gathering, you have seating, all that kind of stuff that where you actually have kind of a gathering point on the canal itself. So in a nutshell, the ability of flexing the parking and then, again, this is an area that we drew specifically because there's a pinch point when you get closer to Taco. It's very narrow. So at that point, we have to really work on how the road and the bike path and the canal all works together. But as you look at this, when you lengthen this out further, these parking nodes can get longer, six, eight, 10, depending on what's, what's happening. So if there is a development that comes in place, we could have a stretch of 12 or 15 car, 15 cars as, as parking. But the idea that you have this, it's a very linear thought, linear form, but you're putting this curving element throughout the landscape. And it is, it is terraced. So you have road, and then it drops down a little bit to the bike path, and then it drops down another three or four feet down to the canal walk. So that's the concept for Water Street. Here's your elevation. Pretty straightforward. Areas we have debate yet whether the entire canal wall or canal walk has a wall. We know that at, definitely at the 14-foot wide areas, that would have a canal walk or canal seat wall. Other areas might, may not, depending on budget and, and how, how this gets financed. Definitely lighting, that was an add. The lighting would be very similar to what's on the east side of Taco. And then nice new pedestrian lighting on the street with banners and landscaping and the terraces. These are some of the areas where we can do some of that stormwater capture and really kind of green it up and make it a, a nice green space. This was the preferred concept for the lock site. We'll start at the top. This is kind of a no man's land. Everybody talked about how the water's stinky, how it's, but I think if we can get something that's elevated, having the tower that's higher, maybe that presence of smell may not be as much. We don't know. But the idea is that it's a better visual because you've got this big, large hunk of vegetation or existing trees. And if this is supposed to be the place in the lake, this is that big tower, 50 feet, 30 feet, 40 feet, something like that, this would be the better opportunity for it. And getting up your visual, you'd have a lot more visual on the lake. We did show in generic form what Fresno was talking about as far as their improvements to get the Gobi out of the canal system. But, so that, that would be accommodated. There'd have to be a little bit more adjustment that would happen. We take down this green space to the south and create an informal gathering area. It wasn't an amphitheater, didn't, wasn't intended to be an amphitheater. It was just a space where if there was a gathering, if there's something going on, that could happen, potentially a fire pit. I know those are big in some of the cities now. It's having some kind of a fire element down by the water. Kayak launch was one of the things that Fresno wanted as, as well as up to the north. And then having a circulation path that would circulate through the, the park and then some kind of a adventure play that would be hopefully oriented and themed towards the Native American Indian because there's a very strong presence of Native American artifacts and whatnot in the, in the area. An entry node, an interpretive plaza that really kind of talks about where the locks are and the, the importance of the locks to, to Minasha. And then the bigger element is taking down the residents and making a mixed use, or it's a public-private. It's not a private, it's not a public building. It's a public-private where it could be an ice or a warming house. It could have kayak rental. There could be concession or sales, but it doesn't necessarily have to be all taken on by Minasha. And then additional parking, we added about 30 additional spaces to accommodate that new use. With this and with the, the takedown of the, the parking area, this creates more of a gathering space. Right now, it's kind of, you get there and you don't know what to do. This really kind of says, you've entered into a park and you've created a gateway for people that are coming across, loop the lake.
Sorry.
There. That's good. I'm done.
And just real quickly, this final section of plan just talks about implementation. And just real quickly, this final section of plan just talks about implementation. We laid out a number of strategies, I'm not gonna really go into, we could discuss them if folks had a chance to review the document, but kind of looking at some different ways to tackle the landing zoning, zoning land use element, similar to the discussion you just had here with the, with the gentleman. Identified some different funding sources, kind of put together an overall timeline for how these strategies would fit together. Don't try to read that. This is just an Excel version that I provided to Sam, so he can track some of these things and kind of have a status report, identifies kind of the team, the costs and funding applications. Big picture funding or cost estimates, again, pretty high level, I think we had a 25% contingency on this. Really need to get into that engineering design to get a, a good handle on these numbers, but very, very big look at the Water Street reconstruction that would take on the street, the canal, the trails, the wayfinding, the site furniture. I think that also included reconstruction, a portion of that wall tied in with the canal.
Correct.
Canal wall. So at about three and a half million total, you know, before looking at a grant funding, et cetera. Manashal Lock Site, we estimate about 2 million. And then the Taco Street redevelopment, that was looking at that whole piece with redoing.
Yeah, not including the buildings, it would be the exterior, the parking lot improvement, and then any of the streetscape approved. Not, not the new street, but just the, the streetscape itself, the, from curb to, to building.
Yep. I think the street was tied into the Water Street reconstruction piece. Again, don't try to read that, but we put, I think I had like 50 or 55 different funding sources kind of.
You can try to read it.
And then which, which portion of this project they might fund. So that should be, could be a tool going forward, and certainly take any questions folks might have. Comments?
Sure. First, gentlemen, what a great, great project you guys did. Very thorough. Tremendously thorough. I do have one, one question. Over on the east side of, towards the Racine Street Bridge, we, we focused on having the, the, the walkway on the water, and then we had focused on having the apartments right there. So, which I really like that picture for strategy number 15, this little picture here with the walkways on both sides in the water. I like that. That's what I envisioned a little bit. But I'm just curious why the, why the changeover of having the, the condos and things on the, on the river towards the Racine Street Bridge with the walkway and the boats parked there? Looks really nice. Why, why did we go away from that on the, towards the Taco Street?
I'll, I'll give my rationale, and then I'll let Garrett jump in, probably different, somewhat different thought process.
Just wondering why the, the conflict, the changeover.
Right, why not push the road up to the water, kind of thing, similar to what the woman suggested. I, you know, I think, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons to that. You know, I think Kim was one of the developers, and there were some other people there at the, at the January 29th meeting, I think, that maybe envisioned putting the road up to the water. I guess, from my standpoint, one, some of the rationale is, you know, great streets really, you know, we're trying to create a really special street here. I think if you guys could actually pull this off, you know, this would be a very, I think, kind of unique and special street for the Fox, you know, Valley, Fox Cities. And I think doing a great street like this, or along a canal, you know, provides an opportunity to get people outside. It provides an opportunity to add value to the development that may occur on the north side of the street. In some ways, it kind of brings the water and the canal, it almost widens the canal and brings that green space further inland, in, in some ways, making, capturing more value out of the water by bringing that whole experience of the canal, the, the, the trails and the greenery back in towards Water Street, in some ways, creating more opportunity to create, to have economic value on the north side of Water Street. So, I, you know, I think there's, that's part of my thinking. You know, the other part is, you know, that, that end is nice, what, what you have. This, I think, has the potential to be nicer, because it not only will add a lot of value to some of that private development, but it also is a public, open, available street for everybody in the community to enjoy. Now, if you bring the development right up to the water, you're kind of limiting it to certain, you know, folks that can find that canal walk and walk on the water. This kind of makes it more open to the community.
Can you go back to the, the base plan? In addition, there's, there's double parcels. You've got parcels on Water Street, and you've got parcels on Kekona. They'd have to take down both parcels in order to get circulation through, if you think about it. Otherwise, we'd have to have like a back entry, a back drive, which pinches the development and doesn't make it as feasible. No, go to the actual overall plan. Yeah, just like a, one of the base plans. So, by having that street go through, you're not inhibiting anything. You can do development right against the street, you can do development, i- if they wanted to, you could pull the, pull it forward and eliminate that part of the street, but they just have to have rear access unless they take down both parcels and access from Kekona. That'd be my, one of my bigger things. Do you see what I'm saying? So go even farther backwards, you want your land use plans. So, so there's, this parcel line is divided.
Right.
So if you do development on this side, and you take away this street, they're landlocked, they can't get in. So unless they take down both parcels and they can get in from Kekona, which you could do, but what we're saying is we're leaving an amenity for the developer to come to, and if they want to, they can take over that street, vacate it, and put the street, or put some kind of app, or access to their buildings in the back.
Got it. Okay, so that's just a, just a different thinking of what happened 15, 20 years ago, or whatever.
Yeah, and, and if you look over here, there's access, there's a, there's a, there's a middle street that you can get to. So it's kind of a, it kind of worked out better that way. And it's actually nice to have that up, but I think you have a little bit more residential, a little bit more different conditions on the west side.
Sure. I was just wondering why there was a change of, change of thoughts.
But it doesn't mean to say that we can't. We can pull that forward if we need to, just have to create that access to the back.
The bike path and the, the walking area, I think that's really nice. Now, if you just get that water to be blue rather than green, it'd be really good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It would be great.
Yes, thank you.
We gotta get the locks going. Open up.
Do others have questions this evening or comments?
Alderman Sevigny? Thank you, Mayor. Just because Randy made that comment during those committee, I shouldn't say committee, those neighborhood meetings that we had, I had suggested that because of that problem that we have in the canal, and even with the locks there, it's still a problem. And what we need to do, is what we needed to do is address that water flowing over the trail area with a, with a small bridge, so that water is constantly moving all the time. And I always envisioned, if you've ever been to Chilton, and you saw their dam, and how it flows down, we should have something just like that. I think you can do all these things you want, but if you're gonna have stagnant green water, there's no purpose for it. I really think that we really, you, you should be looking at that as part of this design. And I don't know if you understand what I'm saying, you know, that portion, or it would go into Little Lake Buttermore, and then you wouldn't have to worry about the Gobi either, because they couldn't.
They can't get over the top, they can't fly.
So, all right, thank you.
Yeah, and that's that, that development there. I think there's, there's like a senior housing development. I think there's like a three-story apartment building right next to that. No?
I'm talking about the trail itself.
No, I'm talking about Chilton. I was talking about Chilton. So it does make a nice location for housing and.
In fact, they, they just, things done. They've actually are now building another building next to that. So they've now have two major developments that are going in there. And I think it is because of the, the nice scenery.
Yeah, sure. I will just say one thing with the water, because I did a lot of work and, worked in Nina and a lot of communities around here, and people mentioned how lousy the water quality is. But I also, I always so like to just put in a plug, you know, for when you do travel, you know, and, and other places around Wisconsin, you, you do see water that is equally as, off putting at times, at certain times of the year. But you also see, you know, thriving, you know, establishments and people out on the water and enjoying the water even despite that sort of negative water quality. And then I guess finally, we did have, one of the strategies in here was to look at doing like a river management plan or a lake management plan, and to, to start looking at some strategies. You know, if you could work with the DNR, get a plan in place, you could have some mechanisms to, to do some water quality treatments through here that could, given the restricted nature of this area, could, could be impactful, whether that's some mechanical harvesting or biological treatment, or.
Or just general pumps and flowing of water, just to get the water moving is one of the bigger things.
Solar powered, of course, it's have a solar powered.
They've got the solar powered.
Yes.
It's solar powered, so it doesn't cost us.
It's just something, and that, that's part of that plan. It's in our plan that we've addressed it. We know that if it's green, it looks like you can walk on it, it's not as pleasant as having something that you can get a kayak in. So we, we do understand that.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, very nice presentation. A lot of interesting facts and things. I noticed, me being a financial guy, I saw the six to seven million dollar type expenditure for this project. Did that include purchases of homes in that area, or businesses that you might have to do? Was that just pure?
No, that's just all in, that's within the right-of-way improvements, what we can do within, well, we didn't do any land takedown, though.
No, it was just, you're right, it was just the infrastructure pieces, not the acquisition of.
So like the parking lot element behind Taco, those buildings, the, the, the cost of that land was not included in, in the cost. We really didn't have any, well, for the lock site, the residential, that would have to be added into the mix. We didn't, we didn't add that in the mix. But there's really, anything along Water Street, there was no acquisition needed.
That part, okay. Thank you.
So what we're looking for this evening is a motion to approve the plan. If anyone cares to do that this evening? Alderman Sevigny?
The only reason I'm not like gung ho to approve the plan is, is that I think there's so, I, I like the idea and the concept, and, and I attended all the meetings and made myself available. But I still think that you could do all these things. And if you don't get that water flowing, it's really a waste of money. And, but obviously, we have a little gem here that Manasha needs to work on. I mean, I've looked at that ever since I was a little kid, and always wondered, why is there just that guardrail there? There's so much potential. So with that, though, I'll, I'll move that we approve the Water Street corridor plan.
There's a motion, a second, and to your comments, Stan. What this does is it directs Director Schrader to start putting some of those items in the CIP, for you guys to all review at the next budget. This doesn't give Sam the opportunity to go out and spend $6 million and do this project. It tells him that you want to start implementing it and should start putting that in our plans, although Sam would like to, apparently. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I'm gonna vote against it tonight is because in the past, when we vote for things like that, it becomes a weapon, and it's used against us. And I agree with Alderman Sevigny, I don't think we need to approve it at this time. So for that reason, I'm out.
Alderman Grady?
I just want to make one comment with, I love the proposal, everything, but this is a bigger, this is only a component of a bigger picture. This connects Loop the Lake. This will take us all the way through our downtown eventually, through Jefferson Park, to Heckrod. Where in the valley can you ride a bike and go through one whole district and one whole city along the water? This is going to be phenomenal if this can come through. That's the comment I just wanted to make.
Director Schrader?
I just wanted to address Alderman Taylor's comment. Per the Plan Commission recommendation, and nothing against the motion on the floor, it was to approve the Water Street corridor plan as presented, as an advisory plan to guide future development and infrastructure improvements within the corridor. So I don't know if, Alderman Sevigny?
So if there's no further discussion, if we could take a roll call vote, please?
So this is an advisory one? We can maybe tweak this a little bit, or are we gonna stick to the old rule? All right.
It's a master plan. You've not spent any money on infrastructure, and it's a master plan. It's, it's to help you feed the fire for, for getting those, those, those single, those single plans going. And maybe you kick it off with one little project, and it kind of builds from there. So.
Alderman Sevigny?
Also, too, what this does is if we ever do go out and look for grant dollars or other funding mechanisms, we have a plan in place in order to show that we're serious about this and that these are the things we want to do. And that's why this is very important.
And some of those water quality grants are fairly substantial, and it, it's driven by economic dollars. We, in order for us to do economic development, we have to have better water quality. So that's the kind of hand-in-hand stuff that goes with that. So.
So no further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-1.
Thanks again for the opportunity.
I do want to say, your community is awesome. You have great people here, and they're very active, and it's very, it's a pleasure to work with you guys. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And seeing that we have one other person in the audience, if no one objects, I'd like to move to item four at this point, right below it. Peter Youngbacher is here this evening, so if we could move forward to the development agreement. Alderman Sevigny?
Do you want me to make, make the motion? So, thank you, Mayor. Then we, I would like to make a motion that we approve the development agreement between the City of Manasha and Alexander and Bishop One LLC pertaining to the TIF 14.
Is a motion, a second? Discussion? Director Schrader, did you want to, does anyone have questions, or would? Okay. So if no one has questions, we can take a roll call vote.
Motion carried on, roll call 4-3.
Thank you for coming, Peter. Didn't have to talk, but it all worked out okay. And we will move all the way back to the first page, the Report of Department Heads, Staff and Consultants. We do have the minutes and communications this evening. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I move that we receive minutes A through I, and communications J through S.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Yes? Did you have discussion, Stan?
I do.
If you're using the wrong agenda, that's the amended one.
Oh, that's fine. Because we're gonna use that later on anyways, because it's on the agenda. But anyways, I just wanted to talk just a little bit. I know Alderman Taylor is going to, too. He had a letter in the packet, and so did the mayor, basically dealing with the bridge, and some issues with funding, and, and also how we deal with the bridge in the future and that. And I just, I do like the fact that Alderman Taylor has been following up, and that the mayor has also stayed active in this. And I just also want to note that when both Alderman Langdon and myself got elected two years ago, it was the first thing that he and I did. We met with Amanda Stuck, and she has put together a piece, an assembly bill that will hopefully accomplish the things that were in the mayor's letter, and also in the letter that James had.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Your, your letters that you sent to Representative Stuck, the governor, and quite a few people on the back here. Well, wasn't that shared with us at all, in communications or anything?
I communicate with Amanda Stuck's office. I communicate with Amanda Stuck's office quite often, I also communicate with Roger Roth's office. I have not communicated a lot with the governor's office in the past, but I did in this case. This letter to the governor was brought about based on some discussions that I had with Mayor Cummings as well as Mayor Pennerman about the importance of bridges in their communities, and I wanted to stress in that case the regional nature of this issue, that this is not a Manasha issue, this is a statewide issue. So I do not usually share every discussion I have with every elected official or person within the community in the council packet, as you and other Aldermen don't as well, but when it is important, I will put those in.
Well, I appreciate you reaching out to these people, and you know, as it pertains to the bridge, certainly like to keep in the loop on that. And also, with your correspondence, was Resolution R-15-17, was that sent to?
That was with the letter that went to the governor.
That went to the governor only?
The letter that you're recognizing from Amanda Stuck, for Representative Stuck's office, that also, not that, that's the one to the governor, the one, the other one, that was meant to convey issues that were important to us on the general state budget, and that same letter also went to Representative, Senator Roth's office. I delivered that one in person to him during a listening session, it's a very similar letter, and then the one to Amanda Stuck, she had reached out to us asking about our priorities for the state budget. Since then, she has met with the governor, I believe, was it last Wednesday or Thursday, I think she told us, regarding the bridge and some of those items. We also had the Secretary of Administration here on Friday who met with us. Director Odomsky and myself, as well as Mayor Pennerman, spoke to him about the importance of the bridges and also some general local topics that were of interest to us and to him.
Well, certainly, I appreciate that you showed a united front with Oshkosh and Kokona and possibly DePere on the situation. Was our, was the Resolution R-15-17, was that sent to the governor?
It was included, I believe, with all of those letters, I didn't actually see the copies, but it did get sent to the governor. I'm not sure if it got sent to everyone on that list, I believe it did.
Because it probably should get sent to all the senators and legislatures in Madison, I would think it'd be very helpful for them because of the, the bridge being such a regional bridge. So if they're going to be looking at this at some point, it'd be nice for, I think, for them to get this. And Rogers Roth's office had this too, R-15?
That was sent to Rogers' office two years ago, or whenever it was originally passed?
I know, but some, at some point it wasn't there and it didn't.
I didn't send it back to him again since we last spoke about it.
I was just checking to see if, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't send that to all the elected officials and especially the group that you have listed on the back here, since they're going to be making decisions on, on Section 84-10 to exclude lip bridges. I think it'd be helpful.
And I did also speak with Representative Hince as well about the issue, and he is also quite concerned with the bridge in Oshkosh that's also coming up for reconstruction.
Okay. Well, thank you, the information is welcoming, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Page two. The consent agenda has nine items on it this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council of March 18th, the Board of Public Works' recommendations for the change order to Vinton for Main Street reconstruction, it's an add of $17,011.78. The payment to Vinton Construction for the Main Street reconstruction, it's the final payment for $18,312.81. A change order to Donald Hipis and Sons for the water main and sanitary sewer reconstruction, it's for $11,275.25, change order number two. And also the final payment for that same job in the amount of $14,380.15. A payment to Yankee General Contractors for the Province Terrace Trail construction, payment number one, $22,483.80. And the authorization to execute the Wisconsin DOT Bridge Operation Agreement for 2020. The Niaman Asha Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations for the Memorandum of CERT Firefighter Rehabilitation Agreement Without a Gamy County Emergency Management CERT Rehab Program. And the Niaman Asha Fire Rescue Joint Fire Commission recommended approval of the Regional Fire Department Hiring Process Agreement with Fox Valley Tech. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevigny?
Would we need to separate the Common Council minutes if we?
If we want to make an amendment, we'll have to.
Okay, so then I guess, one, two, three, four, five, and six, two being the change order to Vinton and the payment to Vinton, four being the change order to Donald Hipis and Son, and the payment to Donald Hipis and Son, for five, and then the Yankee General Contractor.
Okay. So items remaining are the DOT Bridge Agreement and the two Niaman Asha Fire Rescue items. Does anyone wish to separate any of those? Okay.
Seeing that, I'll move for approval of the authorization to execute with the Wisconsin DOT Bridge Operation Agreement and at this time, I guess, or.
Do I do all three of them?
All three of them.
Okay. So items seven, eight, and nine.
Right, I guess, I got a little lost there. I thought we were still.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second by Alderman Kruger, and could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Alderman Sevigny?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Common Council minutes of 3:18, 2019.
There's a motion, a second.
Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
Now, we need to make a change, obviously, there's a slight error that was brought to our attention by Sandra Taylor about the vote pertaining to Resolution R-819, that's pertaining to the tax incremental district. The vote was five to three, and I believe she knows who the individuals who voted one way or the other.
So you're making an amendment to amend the motion carried on roll call five to three with Alderman Nichols, Sevigny, Grady, Grady, and Repella voting yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you get a second? Okay. So there's an amendment on the floor at this point? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and now the Common Council minutes are on the floor as amended. If we, if there's no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Debbie's still working on typing. Oops, Marx isn't registering for some reason. Nor Ted's. Did you vote, Ted? Okay. You want to try again to Mark? And yours does not work, huh? Okay.
I'll do a restart. Let's try this, and let's do a restart.
Okay.
Go ahead and ask, ask them for it again.
Okay. And Marx still does not like him for some reason. Looks like, huh? Yeah.
You know, maybe that could be the problem with the average getting lower sometimes.
It should be there, it should be all set, you should be able to vote Mark.
There we go, perfect.
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the change order for Vinton Construction Company Contract Unit Number 2018-01, Main Street Reconstruction Add $17,011.78, change order number one.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Oh, yours doesn't want to.
I'll hit the restart. I'm going to hit restart. Hope you would please vote again.
Oh.
I hit the restart, yeah.
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
You're staying on for the rest of the meeting apparently. I don't think it's working actually.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the payment for Vinton Construction Company Contract Unit Number 2018-01, Main Street Reconstruction for $18,312.81, payment number six and final.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the change order for Donald Hipis and Sons Incorporated, Manasha Utilities and City of Manasha, 2018 Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction, MCM Number M0002-9-17-00839 for $11,275.25, change order number two.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the payment to Donald Hipis and Sons Incorporated, Manasha Utilities and City of Manasha, 2018 Water Main and Sanitary Sewer Reconstruction, MCM Number M0002-9-17-00839 for $14,380.15, payment number 10 and final.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
I will make the motion to approve the payment for Yankee General Contractors Incorporated, Contract Number 2000, or 20019-02, Province Terrace Trail, Nature's Way to USH Highway 10 to State Highway 114 for $22,483.80, payment number one.
Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for March 21st through 28th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Repella?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, number one, accounts payable and payroll for the term 3/21/2019 to 3/28/2019 in the amount of $6,658,150.92.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Grady. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Oh, there are none. There we go. Next item is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Repella?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, number two, the beverage operators license applications for the 2017 to 2019 licensing period.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the operators licenses as noted on the March 27th memo. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
So item five is the letter of intent to purchase 140 Main Street. If we think we're going to go into closed session, we may want to hold off on this one until the end so we don't have to pay Dan to sit here and watch us. What is the pleasure of the council? That's what I was going to say, so it's a pleasure to hold off on this so we can do it at the end. Okay. Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance 3-19. Do we have a?
Mayor, you forgot five and six.
I think we should be accepting Bitcoin and Litecoin in the future. I think we need to study it, but anyways, this one is Alderman Langdon, so.
We should probably note for those watching at home who didn't see it at the beginning, we did have a little April Fool's joke at the beginning.
And it was on my expense.
We did have a little April Fool's joke at the beginning of the meeting this evening regarding accepting Bitcoin and Litecoin for city payments, and Alderman Sevigny was excited about it and thought it was a real agenda item, so maybe he'll be bringing it.
It should be a real thing, and trust me, later, give it a few years, you guys won't be laughing.
And maybe he'll bring it forward in the next council terms, so. Exactly.
This is Mark Langdon.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to approve the ordinance 0-3-19, and it's an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances, and it's for the offenses against public safety and peace and also vaping, and that is introduced by myself, Alderman Langdon, and it is recommended by the Administration Committee.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Did you guys all read your 300 pages in the packet? Good. Alderman Grady?
I was just going to comment on that. Good thing it was double sided, otherwise that would be an arreema paper, but no, that was okay, but I don't know if there's any type of boundaries or, we understand the importance of vaping in minors and stuff, but they have so much paper being used on that as examples, I don't know. I mean, I just kind of questioned, it was a little bit of overkill as compared to some of the other ordinance and things that are passed and not passed, and there's no copies of anything, just my piece.
So seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? So seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? I think we've all had to turn our, well, not all of us, just this side of the table.
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Item two is ordinance four. Do we have a motion? Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Like to approve the motion, the ordinance for 0-4-19, and that's an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordnances, and that's the offenses by juvenile for vaping. And that is introduced by myself, Alderman Langdon, and it is recommended by the Administration Committee.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Item three is Resolution Six. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Number Three, R-619, Preliminary Resolution Declaring Intent to Exercise Special Assessment Powers Under Section 66.0703, Wisconsin Statutes, Ponds of Manasha Phases II and III, New Street Construction, Introduced by myself, Alderman Repella, Recommended by the Board of Public Works.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Alderman Taylor?
In our subdivisions, have you ever thought about going to a complete concrete instead of blacktop out there?
Do you want to comment on that?
I know we discussed that in the past with Director Radke.
Just to take, for instance, Province Terrace versus the new subdivisions. Province Terrace, the assessment for the property owners was about $120, and that was concrete. And for the ponds of Manasha, we're estimating about $80 for asphalt. So to try and have, you know, a 50% increase of the cost to the property owners is something that we can definitely look at. However, that's a significant increase in cost to property owners, and it's not one that I would necessarily see as being beneficial, you know, to the property owners, seeing as they would never get special assessed against it again.
I just see Apple to do that in a lot of their new areas with the, with the concrete and just the last probably 50 years out there compared to blacktop. Seems like the homeowners out there would like to have concrete too. They don't like those blacktop stripes coming into their driveway on hot days. And I think the long-term effects for the city instead of the chip seal program coming back at a later date, so just a thought. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
So item M is claims against the city. I'll have the attorney go over it before we take a motion.
I did provide a memo indicating that the city received a notice of injury and then a claim for damages from Cheryl Fontaine Kempf and Sean Kempf. So that's two separate claims. They are husband and wife. It was for a fall that occurred in front of 220 Main Street on July 28th, 2018. I will note that I indicated in my memo that that sidewalk right there was replaced as part of that new street project, and that is not the case. viewing of the sidewalk did fail to show what defects that the claimants are alleging. This occurred on the same day as there was something going on downtown.
Midwest sunsplash.
Thank you. And I did provide notice to Midwest Sunsplash when we had received the notice of injury, and I also had sent it to Manasha Group LLC, since that is the owner of the building. And I didn't know exactly where it occurred because part of the property in front of that business is owned by the business, and some of it's owned by the City of Manasha. But there isn't any kind of a defect that we could notice. Information has been provided to CivMec, and with my discussions with our CivMec representative, both Tom Mann and I are recommending that the city formally deny the claims, and then we'll provide the statutory notice to both of the claimants.
Alderman Sevignac?
I'd like to make a motion to send a formal notice of disallowance for the claim by Cheryl Fontaine Kempf and Sean Kempf, and that they be advised of their statutory rights pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 893-80.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote then, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
We still do have one member of the public. Did you wish to speak at this time, member of the public? Okay. If, seeing that there's no one from the public who wishes to speak, do we have a motion to recess at this point? There's a motion, motion and a second to recess to committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are at recess. Thank you.